For the public, uh, meeting agendas available for public at the table. Also access public agendas at RRPS.org. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Over to Paul, we've got everybody except for director Jody Westby and Noel is unable to join us this evening. So, six of us here tonight can get through this agenda relatively quickly. Approval for the agenda, can I, you got a motion?
I make a motion. I make a motion.
Motion by Westby?
Support.
Support by a lot of her, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed unanimously. Visitor input ahead, anybody sign up, is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak? Please, to the podium state your name. We have a timer, we have three minutes.
Each of you get three months?
Hello, my name is Noah and I was a senior this last hockey season. I'm here to discuss the posting for the girls' high school coaching position. Throughout my five years of high school hockey, I've been with three different head coaches. So I experienced firsthand how difficult it was to go through that many coaches in so little time at this level. Last season, Cassie took on a huge responsibility of taking the job four days before last season started. She was also interviewed in October of 2024 for this position. This team quickly adjusted to our head coach Cassie because we were already being coached by her as the assistant coach two years prior. I can confidently say that last season with Cassie as our head coach has by far been the greatest season I've ever been a part of. She brought this team together, strengthened this team's skill and made this team into a family. She pushed us to be the best versions of ourselves on and off the ice. Cassie was the first coach in over a decade to bring us to the section finals. I'm also aware that last meeting you discussed that it's not due to her performance for posting this job. However, I believe that should be strongly considered. Cassie not only has the skill to coach, her overall character of a person speaks volumes. I've never had a coach who cares as deeply as she does. She listened to us and let us voice our thoughts and concerns. She values us as players and as individuals. I've never had a coach as dedicated to this program or to us girls. The school board was also aware that this position was an interim position. So I needed to take three months after the high school hockey season ended for this position to be discussed. Because it's putting this team in the same position as last year. Of the girls wondering who their coach is going to be and what's going to happen to them. So on behalf of myself and the team, we ask that you strongly consider Cassie as the head coach. She has earned our trust, our respect, and has proven her commitment to this team in every way that matters. We believe she is the right person to continue leading this program in the right direction. Thank you for your time and for listening to our voices and for taking our experiences into account as you make this important decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Ayla Troutwine, I'll be a senior for this upcoming season. I'd just like to add on to Noah's points and add something around. So I have played varsity hockey since my eighth grade year and in that span of four years, there has been three different head coaches. Each one having a different coaching, or each way, each coach having a different style of coaching. Out of the three, our past years, or out of the three past years, Cassie has been the absolute best coach. We have had many different coaching staffs and so the best coaching staff has been our head coach Cassie Strand, assistant coach Madison Letzka, and our JV coach Jeff Ralston. Each one has put countless hours towards our team in and outside of hockey itself. Especially Cassie, after this last season when our coach unexpectedly quit a week before our season. With everything that was already planned, it felt like it had all gone down the drain. But Cassie stepped up and took on that role for us. And not only that, we became a very close and successful team this past year. We made it to the section finals for the first time in over a decade. Our team became so much closer than we ever have before. Cassie always had always did anything she could for us, even when it was on her own time. We've been working with Cassie and this coaching staff all this past season and summer, especially Cassie. She's been preparing to make this season, this next season even better than last one. And to get, to get this taken away from not only her, but our team in general would only make it harder for all of us. I'd just like to say thank you for taking the time to listen to what we have to say. And please consider Cassie as our coach this next upcoming season.
Thank you.
Hi, I am Nancy Kudkoski and I guess I'm just speaking from a parent point of view, from having my daughter on the team. I guess this is, the last season was the very first season that there were no issues, you know, amongst the team and the girls and how they got along and how they supported each other and pushed each other. And it was because they wanted to do it for Cassie, you know, as far as they got. And also Cassie is not a parent coach, which is huge. Because I'm sure many of you in here have had experience with their kids, you know, and having a parent coach. And it's just not, it just doesn't work out for either the coach or the child. So I think that's a huge, huge thing. And just the dedication I have seen as a parent that Cassie has for the team is remarkable, you know. And also the biggest and only fundraiser the girls have is their golf scramble, which the funds they make through that carries them through the whole season. And they already had that like a month ago. And Cassie did a lot of the legwork for that already. She has done three weeks of camp already for, you know, for Rock Ridge. So, you know, and she did that just because of her dedication and her love for the girls and the team. So I just hope that everything that I have said and the girls have said, you know, is taken into consideration when the decision is made for head coach.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Anybody else would like to speak? Anybody else? Okay. Moving along, uh, 4.1, um, Anderson, Pete?
You're leaving Pete, they don't want to hear you.
It's all exciting stuff.
It's been a little while. Thanks for having me.
Welcome back.
I'll try to get through it quick, sounds like you want to wrap up, so. I'm sure you've had time to look at this too, so I will go through it quickly. Here to talk about the design development estimate, so we call it DD estimate for the special education remodel in the building 1404. So we're going to hit a little design update, give you some more review there, talk about our DD estimate summary, and then the comparison from SD to DD so you can see where we've come. And then talk about a milestone schedule and then we will ask for an approval at the end to move into the construction document phase, which would then go out to bidding for contractors. So going into the design, the demo plan, as you can see, is pretty minimal for demo. We tried to do that both with the advisory team, Stephanie leading that charge and the design team, keeping all of these offices intact, so we're not removing any of those walls or having to rebuild. We are taking out the carpet and the ceiling just by the time we change out lights and configurations and duct work and stuff for the classrooms that we'll get into on the next slide. It just made sense to come in and take all of that stuff out. The most extensive demo is probably down here in the bathroom to allow for the assisted lift in that bathroom on the bridge to Independence side. Overall, pretty minimal demo. Moving into the floor plan, so this space, so to orientate you, this is the south side of the 1404. This is the demising wall and then the north side is that big wide open, I call unfinished space. So we'll have the setting four on the west side of the building and the bridge to Independence on the east side. And they do each have their own entrances to these spaces. Kind of going through these, so that's where that assisted lift is, remodeling that bathroom. But we are not touching the other bathrooms in the space to minimize cost to finishes. So we'll just clean them up nice so they're presentable. Adding in a conference administrative office space, a media flex space, which Stephanie has talked about, you know, you have to earn your way into that media flex space, both the bridge to Independence and setting four side. There'll be a life skills area, we call it life skills lab, so kind of that kitchen setting for learning how to cook and do dishes and that kind of thing. A breakout space, like a small group room like you've seen in the other buildings. And then more of the comment space here for collaborative learning and activities. We have the nurse's office here and one other office on this side. Again, this is the demising wall here between the spaces. The double doors are electronically secured, so people can't just freely go back and forth. On the setting four side, there are four individual classrooms for the students. And we do have some breakout rooms, small group room, a collaboration room. And then there is the common space as well for some of that collaborative learning. Two sensory rooms, another office and one additional, sorry, two additional toilet rooms here. So we did strategize on placing some of these, like the toilet rooms, that's existing sanitary line runs right down the middle of these offices. So we tried to keep those up there just to minimize sock cutting and that kind of stuff during demo.
Are there going to be lifts, lifts in the bathrooms?
Yeah, so there'll be an assisted lift in this bathroom here in the bridge to Independence side.
Okay.
So most likely a floor mounted system, floor post system.
Okay.
Good question. The finishes plan, I'm not going to go through all this, but you guys can look in your packet too. Mostly carpet, but there are some resilient flooring spaces for some of the like large motor skills, which I didn't mention on the last slide, sorry. So this space down here is kind of like an indoor play area. There might be a swing in there, that kind of thing for both, both entities. And then on the low voltage plan, so I show this just to show you, this is like what it looks like on our takeoff sheet for all the different cameras, data ports, door access control, those kinds of things for car meters and PA systems, all that kind of stuff. So as you can see, the page gets very colorful and there are quantities up there of the takeoff. I'll explain more why I showed that. So moving into the budget, right now our DD estimate is showing 2.8 million. So hard costs of 2.3 and then your total soft costs for the administrative side and owner items for any FFNE testing, that kind of stuff, like we've had on the other projects, is just under that 500,000. We do have two add alternates for some flexibility during bid time and bids come in more favorably. We could add an upgrade to replace the actual air handling units that are sitting outside right now. Currently in the base price, we are just going to reconfigure duct work. So this would be to actually take those and salvage them so you'd have extra parts for the other units on the north side and put brand new units on the south side. Add alternate two is for the assistive listening in the four classrooms on the setting four side. So it's that mechanism up in the ceiling like in the other schools and classrooms with the full technology capabilities.
And they can wear the necklace?
Yep, and you can wear the necklace, yep. So right now it's more of a basic system, you'll still see that unit there, it just won't have all the capabilities like the other schools have.
Are those, you said the outside, are they like the ones that used to be here, the outside heating units?
Similar.
Similar, okay.
The units are, I'll say, past their prime, but.
Not conducive for northern Minnesota?
No, no. We're hoping budget allows when bids come in to be able to replace those. But you can look at that in the future too, if, to get the space complete and reconfigured at least. Some of these are old notes, so I'll just kind of reiterate, the building purchase and pre-con fees, those are not a part of this. They were taken care of previously. And then the soft costs, like I had mentioned, design, testing, commissioning, technology items. So from SD to DD was a $260,000 increase. And again, that was mostly contributed to all the low voltage defined details now. At SD, didn't really know what we needed for access control or technology in the spaces. So we've been working with the design team and the advisory team to really solidify those details. So now we got a real full picture of what that looks like. And then this is your kind of normal fine tuning of the different details in the space for walls, casework, finishes, that kind of thing that will start to get detailed out. So milestone timeline, we're here tonight presenting. And if approved tonight, we would expect construction documents from DSGW's team and CMTA by the end of August. And again, during that phase, we'll be continually working with the advisory team and really locking down all those little details to make sure we got it all covered. Then we would plan to bid in the month of September and then bring those bid results back to you October 13th for approval. And then roll right into construction by October 27th. So it's really a good time of year to send this out for bid because everyone's looking for that winter work to fill their books in their schedule to make it to the big spring rush. So that's a, that's a good outlook for bids to start in the fall. And also by pushing this schedule along and keep this thing moving, instead of pushing it out into '26, we don't have to worry about the volatile market. Everybody knows what their pricing is right now and we're pricing it for '25, so we don't have those unknowns in '26. And we're looking about a four month construction duration. So we're leaning, I think, in February, which helps to be. Any questions on design, budget, or schedule?
I'm just wondering, I've, you know, because I've not been through this process, the beginning, just came in in the middle of, you know. So for, will we be getting an itemized like soft costs and hard costs so we can look? Or are, or do you just give us, like, how does that work?
Yeah, once we get into the construction phase, we have a master budget set up with all the hard costs. And then all of your itemized soft cost items too, for all those different commissioning, testing, design, technology, furniture, all those kinds of items are all listed out with dollar amounts.
Any other questions for Pete?
Thank you.
That I'd asked for approval.
I'll make a motion.
A motion by Reardon, any second?
A second.
Second by Bonner, any discussion?
Um, just to recap for the public watching, this is, we're doing, we're putting this forward to get our NLC running or special ed, yeah. So, we're not just throwing it out there, just to throw it out there.
Right, that's a good clarification, yeah.
That's all.
Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Thank you Pete.
Thank you very much.
Consent agenda, can I get a motion?
So move.
Motion by Reardon. Support by a lot of her, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Superintendent report, one thing I did ask Noel to present in his report was an update on the roundabout at Lundgren's and he said that everything is on schedule and should hopefully be open before school starts, so that was, that was good, I think. I don't know, anybody else had? No? Moving on, 6.2 treasures report, can I get a motion?
I'll move.
Motion by Colbert Dahl.
I'll second.
Support by Westby, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. 7.1 North Star Elementary dean and administrative decision, do we all get this paper? Noel, if you have a chance to read through it? Want to have a motion and discussion or how do you want to?
I'll make a motion that we approve by Reardon as the.
I'll second that.
Dean for North Star.
Motion by Reardon, support by Westby. Any discussion? It's a one-year deal, we know that, it's, I don't know if you see if we have any movement after that and, but it's, I think it's a good plan to get us through the '25-'26 school year.
Agreed, I, yeah.
Okay.
And with that motion, that includes the assignment of Sheena.
I was just going to say, should we do it all in one motion?
I think so.
I think so.
Then I'll amend your motion to, I'll just say that with Sheena taking over the administrative principal duties, yes, okay.
I'll second it, yeah.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. 7.2, consider approval of a contracted district literacy lead letter of intent between RRPS and North Star Service Cooperative for the '25-'26 school year.
I make a motion.
Motion by Bonner.
I second.
Second by Colbert Dahl, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Consider approval of resolution adopting independent school district 2909 for the fiscal year '27 long-term facility maintenance tenure plan.
So move.
I think Andrea's coming up, are you coming up Andrea?
Yes, yes, yes.
Good evening, this is the 10-year plan for long-term facility maintenance. We have to do this every year through the, for the state. So on there you'll see some expenditures. Of course, these are all rough estimates throughout the years too, it's 10 years long. It's hard to predict sometimes the future as we know. I did use in certain categories, I used 5% to 10% increase for inflation and costs for inspections, health and safety management, possibility of some uses in ceiling tiles and H-back updated or replacing fixtures, hardware, and also the possibility of roofs in the future, that's new to LTFM. But that's also in there like possibility of, our oldest building now is really the Parkview, for part of the Parkview roof for the future. So I met with Mike Holg and Dr. Schmidt and I talked about this whole plan. So tonight it does need to be approved. If it isn't approved, we have to have a special meeting because it has to be approved by the end of July.
I make a motion.
I'll support.
Motion by Bonner, support by a lot of her, any discussion?
And it's just one of those loosely, like you said, we don't know, we're, we're voting on it like going in a direction, but everything is, is subject to change as year by year.
It is, yeah, and some of those things are givens. We do have inspections every year that we have to follow through and have, and we can use our LTFM towards that. The health and safety management, we can use it towards, there is on the bottom the ins and outs, like the revenues and expenses are listed down there too. Some of the money was used in other projects in the past during our construction phases, so that is a possibility too.
It ends a resolution.
I had it that time, and you weren't going to give me that time, I got it. Any more discussion?
The only other thing is the state gave us some flexibility with this, didn't they?
I believe so, yes, yep, so that's, yep, and it's a 10-year plan.
Yeah, they'll change it before the 10-year, I'm sure.
This is even different than last year's plan and it still has this fiscal year in it now too, so.
Well, who, who knew in 2010 what 2020 would bring?
Correct, right.
Wishing, thanks.
Yeah. We're going to run. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Roll call vote, Director Bonner?
Uh, yes.
Director Westby?
Yes.
Director Johansson, yes, Director Colbert Dahl?
Yes.
Director Lotte?
Yes.
Director Reardon?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. 7.4, consider proposing a legislative resolution, MSBA delegate assembly for upcoming legislative session. As we get this every year to see if there's anything we want to submit to them to, on our behalf for them to work on. We don't take any action on it tonight, Noel just wanted to point it out to us that it's, that's there for the, for us to offer our opinion. So I don't know if anybody wants, has anything on their mind?
The only other thing is that in the next month, the delegate assembly is 135 direct board members from across the state. We have four in our district, district 11, two from 20, area 26 and two from 27. So that'll be coming up if you want to go to the delegate assembly's itself nomination. So think about it, if you have any questions, you can contact me and.
Anybody else we can contact?
Is that all of us or are you just looking at John?
No, anybody.
Any of us.
Any of us, yeah. And what, what the delegate assembly is, is that once all the, the school districts and MSBA put the platform together and it, last year it was like, like, let's say it was like 60 different resolutions. The delegate assembly, 135 from all over the state, they vote, yeah, we want to do that or no, we don't. They determine the platform for MSBA, so, and it's a two-year cycle, so if you say you would like to be on it, you would be this year and next year.
Got it, okay.
And it's a fun, it, it, it's a fun, for networking and then also to be part. and then also to be part of the, the whole system of what, what our platform as the organization will be.
And, and when is that going to take place, did you say?
It'll be out in the next monthly.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm thinking it'll be out either at the end of July or the first of August because they, the, and it, and it is, it takes place the first weekend in December down in Minneapolis, so you're down there for two days.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Tim.
Yeah, good information.
Is there anything anybody wants to submit at this time? Something to think about going forward if there's something that comes up or?
Right.
Meeting announcements, next regular meeting will be August 11th, at 6 o'clock at the Rock Ridge Admin Building. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Of course.
Support by Lautiger. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
This is crazy.
Yes, 37 minutes.